All right, we'll call the April 7th meeting of the Town Board of Commissioners together. We'll open with a moment of silent meditation, please. All right, can we have a pledge of allegiance? Okay, we'll have your daughters' agenda, got to have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, well.
I'm Del.
Take a roll call first, I reckon, James. Go ahead, take a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the purpose of our listening audience, we're going to go through a roll call. Mayor Owens.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Selby. Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Borland.
Here.
Commissioner Burke.
Present.
And Commissioner Collins.
Yeah.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, we're ready to go. Come on, make a motion, have adoption of agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is it second?
Second.
All right, motion second, adoption of agenda. Take a roll call.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Okay.
All right.
Now we have a consent agenda, got to have another motion, all right?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Have a motion for consent agenda, someone make a motion?
I'm moving to approve that consent agenda is presented.
All right, is it second?
Our second.
Motion approved, consent agenda with a second. Take a roll call, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
All right, James, take off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number five on the agenda, this is Presentations and Reports section. Our only item on this segment of the agenda is an update on the 20-year plan working group. This will be presented by town planner Melissa Dickerson.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Selby and Commissioners. Thanks to everyone for joining us for this report this evening. I will note that we have a few members in the audience who were on the working group and then also, I believe there may be some people online that were also on the working group, including Chair Wickstrom. The purpose of my report this evening is to present to you and update you on the work that has been completed by the Plan Update Working Group. In 1982, the town of Manio began long-term planning by creating a 20-year plan. The 20-year plan was updated in 2002, and the guiding document of the second plan is known as the Plan Update. These plans have guided development, regulations in the town of Manio for the last 39 years. The Plan Update is one of the five documents that make up the town's comprehensive development code as described in the town zoning ordinance. In 2019, the Board of Commissioners appointed a working group to review the Plan Update. The Planning Board Chair chaired the, excuse me, Plan Update Working Group. There were two chairs during the course of the work conducted by the working group. They were Mr. Hal Goodman and Ms. Sherri Wickstrom. Twelve total meetings were held, beginning in July of 2019 and ending in September of 2020. Three meetings were canceled, one for a holiday, a second for a scheduling conflict with a community event related to COA, and a third during the first month of the COVID pandemic emergency. Meetings were held virtually, beginning in April 2020, with the chair, staff, and subcommittee members sometimes attending at Town Hall. On March 23rd, 2021, the Plan Update Working Group met again to review this presentation. The presentation tonight includes feedback offered by the working group to staff at that meeting. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Selby, and Commissioners, I want to publicly offer my appreciation to this group. You will recall that these individuals volunteered their time. They have been incredibly engaged during this entire process and really care passionately about the town of Manio. As well, many of these individuals have also been engaged and been active participants in the downtown associate community meetings. While beginning to review the Plan Update, it was clear that the projects listed in the plan deserved further examination. Thus, subcommittees were formed on a volunteer basis to review each of those projects. Each of you have received binders, including each of the reports that the subcommittees produced. As well, agendas and minutes of the meetings have been included in those. You all have those at your desks this evening. Each of the slides that I have prepared include statements from the Plan Update, which is this document, and then they include sample considerations from each committee. I use the term "sample consideration" so that it implies that there are more considerations offered by the subcommittees than there were. That is why you all have been provided all of the reports, so that you can read them in their entirety when time allows. As well, I have provided in your binder a document that includes the list of subcommittees and their members, so that you can reach out to these individuals should you have any questions related to any of these reports. Please note that while staff were available to assist the subcommittees, these reports were absolutely the products of the subcommittee, of the subcommittee volunteers. It is also notable that each consideration offered in the subcommittee reports may not be endorsed by members of the whole working group. So, as I mentioned, the Plan Update projects listed in the actual document that was being reviewed are wayfinding, traffic and transportation, commercial development along the highway, housing, downtown, the waterfront, College of the Albemarle, village neighborhood improvements, maritime village open-air museum, and open space in stormwater. At their inaugural meeting, the group decided that their mission was to review the plan and provide recommendations to the town commissioners. The working group decided to take a look at each project noted in the Plan Update and ask the following questions: What has been accomplished? What needs to be eliminated? And what needs to be accomplished? The working groups and the subcommittees are a little bit different than the lists, than the projects listed in the original document. The subcommittees reviewed wayfinding, housing, education, maritime village open-air museum, the waterfront, downtown, open space in stormwater, village neighborhood improvements, and commercial development along the highway. I have two notes for you, and I've included on the previous slide where it listed the projects, and this slide, some asterisks. Transportation was not a project reviewed by a subcommittee. At the time this work was beginning, NC DOT had some budgetary issues, and it was just, it was determined that this particular project was better approached when things could actually be accomplished and the town and DOT could partner together. The second note is that with the College of the Albemarle academic building being proposed, planned, and beginning construction by Dare County, the subcommittee approached the larger topic of education. This approach was interesting, given that the town does not have jurisdiction over each of the entities included in the puzzle pieces presented by the subcommittee, which you will see in their report. The group identified other topics that could be included to review. Subcommittees did not review these other topics, but it is important to note them here: senior facilities and aging services, youth recreation, infrastructure, inclusionary planning, and historic education. So the first project was wayfinding. The Plan Update explains that wayfinding is the process of reaching a destination in a familiar or unfamiliar environment. The town has a bit of history with this topic, as it has been examined by previously elected bodies. Ultimately, wayfinding has not been something in which the town has provided dedicated funding to achieve. We had some expertise on this subcommittee, including Ms. Beebe Woody, who researched wayfinding for the town previously as a planning board member. As well, subcommittee member Mr. Bill Massey introduced the group to a wayfinding plan that he had knowledge of, that a group of volunteers produced for Hillsborough, North Carolina. It is easily determined that the town does not have a current wayfinding program. The subcommittee reviewed existing signage and developed a sign inventory. I've included a few pictures to demonstrate the different looks of signage that appear here on the island. The wayfinding subcommittee determined that there should be established a cohesive, comprehensive wayfinding system for the town of Manio. As well, the subcommittee determined that all wayfinding should be seamlessly integrated into digital applications and needs to be ADA compliant. The Plan Update, this is housing, the second project. The Plan Update explains that the opportunity for land development in Manio is limited. The current inclusionary or affordable housing ordinance allows for density bonuses. Trends in Manio include short-term rentals by owners, as more and more units are being used for short-term versus long-term rentals. An additional trend noted by the subcommittee was an aging housing stock with few tools in place to debate, to abate decline. As noted earlier, the original project in the Plan Update was for the College of the Albemarle, but given that construction for the academic building was imminent, the subcommittee took a more holistic approach to education. This approach is a divergence from the plan and invites some jurisdictional questions. The subcommittee's work calls for creating partnerships and lifelong learning opportunities for the community. As well, it calls for enhancing the Plan Update by widening the approach to include what the subcommittee identifies as the five main educational pillars. Maritime Village Open Air Museum. The Plan Update called for the Maritime Village in Manio to provide an educational experience through the exhibition of artifacts and activities related to the island's maritime past. The Maritime Trail conceptual design through the town will connect to open spaces to exhibit institutional and commercial sites promoting activities throughout the year. The subcommittee found that the overall concept of this project did not emerge, and that evolving the concept forward by initiating a committee to continue the concept while also engaging the community to tell Manio's rich history and cultural past told in a museum setting or a maritime interpretive center, where residents and visitors can learn who we are and from where we have come. The waterfront. The Plan Update states that the waterfront is a node of activity, including recreation, such as walking along the waterfront on the boardwalk, swimming, sailing, kayak tours, dolphin watching, fishing trips, the children's park, and indoor restaurants and shopping. The boardwalk, at the time, was defined as from the marshes at the southern end of the town to the northern end connecting to the Quora May Daniels Bass Night Bridge. Of course, now, the boardwalk extends beyond those marshes and does what the plan explains by connecting to Salty Dog, or what is now known as the Marshes Light Development. The subcommittee found that there is a visual disconnect between downtown Manio and the waterfront or boardwalk to Marshes Light. They found a need to connect people into areas for shopping, dining, outdoor adventure, and historic culture by creating visually beautiful outdoor spaces, plantings, art, flowers, small gardens, and appropriate lighting. They noted that there are area, that those areas are the Christmas tree parking lot and the area around it, the Davis Lot or View Shed for the Elizabeth II, and George Washington Creek Park. To address the disconnect, it was suggested that perhaps an arch or arches be installed that say waterfront, similar to the arch at the cemetery. Another consideration that was part, that was offered by the waterfront subcommittee is the jewel, is that the waterfront is the jewel of downtown Manio. It should be clean and planted with flowering trees, shrubbery, and flowers on a seasonal basis. Landscaping staff, seasonal temporary labor, upgraded budgets to landscape, and maintain the cleanliness were all offered as suggestions. One note is that the picture offered on this slide is from Mrs. Stell Wilson's collection. It is looking towards the Quora May Daniels Bass Night Bridge sometime just after its construction was completed in 1983. Downtown. The Plan Update describes downtown, that was, the nucleus of downtown Manio has evolved from a center of government to a commercial center. The Plan notes that the relocation of the post office, the relocation of the county courthouse, the lack of a grocery store in the downtown, as well as limited parking, have combined to discourage many Roanoke Islanders from making regular visits to downtown Manio. The downtown subcommittee noted that adequate parking remains a constant complaint, but is being addressed at least in part by the Newtown Common. The subcommittee suggested accessing needs by conducting a survey and provided sample questions for a survey. The subcommittee recommended exploring in next steps the following: economic development, pedestrians, wayfinding, and residence. It also noted that the Main Street program may address the above concerns and offer solutions. The 2003 inventory of existing parks indicates that there is a shortage of usable parkland for the current population. There was a need to identify, evaluate, and prioritize all the natural and cultural resources into a coherent, open-space plan. The Plan Update called for regulations for stormwater runoff, reflecting from the first one inch of rainfall to be retained on any public or private commercial or multifamily site. The subcommittee suggested that first, the town maintain and/or develop the open space that the town currently owns before obtaining additional properties. The subcommittee also suggested that all stormwater regulations be in the same section of the zoning ordinance. They are currently in sections 17, 26, and 30-40. Village Neighborhood Improvements. The Plan Update noted that there is a paramount need to unite the east and west sides of town. It also noted to encourage the owner of the southwest side of Lucy's Corner to consider development of reasonably priced home. This is the piece of property that is now under town ownership and newly annexed into the town. The subcommittee noted that the Plan Update's design proposal for a senior center imposed the following note or question: The Dare County Center opened in October of 2009 near the Dare County Administration Building and Justice Center. Was this addition to our community, with this addition to our community, is a new senior center still something we need? The subcommittee noted that the P. Island Cook House and Sir Walter Raleigh Roundabout do an excellent job commemorating Richard Etheridge, the many African-American keepers and crew, and Herbert Collins. It serves as a cultural center and tourist destination. However, more needs to be done to document and recognize and commemorate the Freedman's Colony on Roanoke Island. Commercial Development on the Highway. The Plan Update notes, while development along the highway is conveniently located for residents and visitors, they are poorly designed, interfere with vehicular flow along the highway, and are generally inaccessible to pedestrians and create a sense of visual blight. As well, the Plan calls for design to include commercial buildings should be located close to the road with parking behind the structures. The subcommittee noted that pedestrian traffic has benefited from better signage at crosswalks and education for drivers about stopping at pedestrian crosswalks. Crosswalks and ADA pads have been improved. The subcommittee also noted that signs are everywhere along the main highway and should be addressed in the future. It was noted that the Roanoke Corridor voyages rules are not consistently applied between the parcels fronting the highway when located in the county zoning jurisdiction and the town of Manio's zoning jurisdiction. So that's, that completes all of the 10,000-foot view of what I've presented to you all of the projects and the work of the subcommittee. So what's next? Commercial development on the main highway was the final subcommittee to present. Now that all subcommittees have reviewed their relevant projects, it's important to figure out what's next. COVID has offered some interesting challenges and made participatory planning difficult. We are seeing conditions improve and look forward to future days with surets and getting the public engaged in further development of key projects in the town. To help visualize the process, I put together a chart back in September that shows each phase of this work to be accomplished. This is the same chart that I showed with, that I shared with the planning work, with working group back in September of 2020. Carl, can you move my slide, please? Phase one is now complete, with this preliminary report being given to the Board of Commissioners. The next step, or phase two, includes engaging with a consulting team, public engagement, evaluating what goes forward, determine what needs to be added, identifying those projects with significant design elements to engage educational institutions for assistance. Phase three begins with the new fiscal year in July of 2021 and includes a statutorily required comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan process will include public participation. As I mentioned, this is the kind of phase to help the group visualize how this work goes forward, but since the COVID pandemic has not allowed for large gatherings, phase two is a bit delayed. It's my suggestion that, you know, moving forward, we conduct those phase two tasks with phase three during the development of a comprehensive plan. So this is not the end, but it's to be continued. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any thought on AM, what is AM and C, Diamond Church? I know you put, when you go to the west side, you know, the P. Island Life Station and the Collins Park, which is that one family, the Collins. So I know that the church is one of the oldest black church in the Roanoke Baptist Assembly, one of the oldest. So if you could include that, or the planning board can include that, because if I'm correct, is that in town Manio adjacent to the?
Yes.
So we need some thought on that, some standard, because I call it on that. That's really good. Any thought on that, the planning board, anybody want to speak on that? Okay, just a thought.
Any other questions?
Oh, I just want to add, you know, I was involved with all, that whole process, you know, before I started letting me into those meetings as well. And, you know, it's a testament for, another testament for the passion of this community. I mean, it's volunteers over two years. There's a lot of meetings, there's long meetings, and there's sub-meetings, and a lot of, obviously, a lot of hard work that people did over the past two years. All of it is impactful, I think. And so I want to thank every, some people that were here that worked on it, the people that aren't here, and you, Melissa, obviously works hard on it, and James as well. We've got low-hanging fruit in here, we've got big lifts in here, we've got some things that can help drive the comprehensive plan and what DAC. So the only thing I want to add is that I hope, you know, everyone takes the time to really review this. There's a lot in there, but like I said, it's stuff that people work very hard on and is very impactful. So, so thank you.
All right.
This is Del. This is Del. I'd like to thank the working group for all the hard work that they did, and all the ideas they had presented to the board. Like Betty said, Haven Creek Baptist Church was the first church established on Roanoke Island, but not in the same spot, and it was established by the Freedmans, who came here in 1863. I think we could tell the story of the Friedman Colony, maybe somewhere in the church parking lot, also in Cartwright Park, using wayside exhibits and other stuff like that.
All right, anyone else?
I'd just like to thank the working group. I was scanning through the minutes, and I saw a handful of people that were present at every meeting. That's very impressive to make every meeting like that. So I appreciate all the time that you all put forward, Baron. A broad range of subjects you have all put a lot of time and research in, that I'm excited to see something tangible and get to look at. So I appreciate all your work.
Melissa, what, what do you need from us, the board, right now, moving forward? I mean, we're still got a lot left to do.
We do, and I-
What, you know, what is the priority right now?
So I would say that the priority, as we've had in my budget request, that includes the dollars for a comprehensive plan development, that is a requirement in order to maintain zoning for the town. So should that request be included in the budget that you all approve, we'll move forward with that. And a comprehensive plan is, it addresses by chapter some of these topics, like housing and infrastructure. And so, and it is, it is a requirement that it have public participation. So I think that once we kick that off and get moving with, you know, a comprehensive plan being developed, there are some things that we could, that we could pivot and invite student groups to come and help the town with. And I want to be clear that, that the 20-year plan is not a comprehensive plan for the town. There are really great ideas here, but it doesn't fit that bill. But there are some things that we could use student groups to help us with, like a wayfinding program. I don't know that the last time that RFQs were put out, wayfinding, and Aaron and Beebe were able to get those responses. I think that was for, like, private consultants to help with that, but there are opportunities for what I mentioned, like the more design-related stuff. We could, not just students, but there's a lot of opportunities where we could kind of tease out some of these projects and maybe move forward with the design, you know, with the community or with a different group, not necessarily the consultants who are doing the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add on to Tom Planner's comments for Commissioner Walker, I also want to let the board know, we- want to let the board know, we've had our budget retreat, but we are, we are developing that budget actively now, it'll be presented at the May meeting, so the public will want to hear that as well. That budget, the recommended budget from, from the town managers obliged to present to you, not only includes the comprehensive plan, which is required by state statute, but it also includes consulting dollars that will help us with some of these professional services, public participation, and we even have some proposed funding in there for some of these projects, like whether it be interpretive signage, whether it be wayfinding, landscaping, and things like that, that are related to the 20-year plan. And those, those dollars were included in our, as we worked on our draft budget and chatted with the board as retreats. So I do want to assure you that we have taken what this working group has suggested and not only do some of these long-term things, but get some of these short-term projects, the low hanging fruit, as Commissioner Borland mentioned, get it off the ground, because we want to keep up the great momentum that this group is, and the energy that this group is showing. So that will come in the recommended budget at the first meeting in May.
All right. Anyone else? All right, let's move on. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Public comment, James, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Item number six on the agenda. This is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the podium and identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded.
Mr. Mayor, as our custom has been, because we're in a hybrid environment with online and in-person, if it's all right, perhaps we could invite members of the audience who would like to speak first, and then we'll look online for anybody who may want to participate virtually.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, good evening. My name's John Robbins. I'm here on behalf of a group, so I would ask that I get the five minutes, please. The homeowner cannot be here this evening. Can I have the five minutes?
Not over five, because if we do it with you, we're breaking precedent, and we don't need to break precedent. But because you're representing a good group, I mean, everybody, I'm going to say five minutes. You can watch the clock yourself.
So five minutes, then?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I was hoping to get this on the agenda so that we could have some discussion on it, but it was unsuccessful and such. But I'm, I'm here on behalf of the landowner at 113 Ballast Point Drive. And with that said, for all development on in Manio, you have to have a statement of consistency with the land use plan. There's a statement of consistency later on your agenda item for another item, and it's, if it's viewed non, not consistent by the town, the zoning action is not allowed. You can't permit it and go forward. With that said, the determination by the town for a matter of 113 Ballast Point Drive has determined that that lot is unbuildable. You can't, the Pirates Cove is willing to work with the landowner to modify the porches, but as y'all are aware, the properties at Pirates Cove are small. Any so modification will, you just can't fit it on the property. We've had surveyors look at it, we've had others. So what's required is the Corps, the Army Corps of Engineers, allows one to fill a tenth of an acre of wetlands. And they, and that's under CAMA. CAMA governs the first 75 feet in the AEC. Quickly from the land use plan, page 30, it says the CRC has four categories of AECs, the estuarine and ocean system, public trust waters, estuarine waters, shoreline coastal shorelines, and coastal wetlands. And then it says Roanoke Island has 49 miles of estuarine shoreline, then includes all land, includes all lands within 75 feet of normal high water, high, high water level of estuarine waters. The 75-foot band acts as a buffer between development of, and the estuarine waters all the way around the island, including along Manio waterfront. This is important, I'm reading directly from the land use plan. It says the remaining wetlands on Roanoke Island are considered upland wetlands. Although upland wetlands have significant value because of their relationship for, to water quality, habitat, and hydrological function, they are not considered AECs. And then it says the upland wetlands that occur on Roanoke Island are primarily managed pines and pine flats with smaller patches of freshwater marsh because of depressional swamp forests, et cetera. I've had environmental specialists on site who have determined that those conditions don't exist at Pirates Cove. The area that we're talking about is within 75 feet of the estuarine shoreline, which is an AEC, which the ordinance states, hey, that's part of the coastal system, not upland wetlands. Yet the Town of Manio planning staff has determined that any area outside of what CAMA, the CAMA coastal wetlands line, they said, we don't care that's within 75 feet. It's, we're not considered that upland wetlands. And because of that, this person's lot that they've owned since Pirates Cove was developed has been made unbuildable. And it's not the intent of the Town of Manio. It's not the Manio way to take people's property in this manner. 20 years ago, Melissa didn't mention, but in 2002, NC State did the 20-year update. I worked on that. I was part of it. The intent of that land use plan, that section of it, was to protect areas such as in Roanoke Village or the Budley Street Drainage Plan, to keep those areas from being filled. Because once those areas are filled, it becomes the same nuisance as on the north end of the island, where after a rain, you have 10 inches of rainfall that packs up there. This is not the situation at Pirates Cove, within 75-foot AEC. So the one thing that I would ask from you, I'm not asking you to say, hey, John, we agree with you, we, you know, we think it's wrong. All I'm asking from you is to direct the planning board, direct staff to look at adjusting the land use plan, clarifying the land use plan to allow development that fits the development pattern of Pirates Cove. If there's a few people that are from here that I recognize, and Pirates Cove, it's all been filled out there, and it's 98% developed. This land use plan was not meant to stop that last bit of development. And so not everyone who owns property, waterfront property is wealthy. You know, this person's invested in it, and they just need help. And I would ask that y'all would take action, just to say, hey, we need to direct planning staff, we need to direct the planning board and put it up before public hearing. Thank you for your time, and I know we're not allowed to answer any questions, but at the end of the meeting, if anyone has any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right. Thank you, John. Of course, you know we can't respond. James, go ahead.
Malcolm Fearing, have a different tone. You thanked the members of the working group. They came from different tribes, but the tribes came together to produce a product that I hope you all become familiar with, become proud of. That's not exactly what I want to talk about. I wanted to extend a thanks to y'all, and I believe that the members of the group would agree with me for allowing the public to engage and produce a work product for y'all to review. That takes leadership to do that, to invite other people in, and you did that. And along that same tone, I want to thank y'all for what y'all have done, your service. I'm 66 years old, speaking for a group, and I have not seen this level of public and private money being invested in, in the Town of Manio. A lot of things are going on. Now, many times you all hear people thanking you for your service, your vision, your thoughtful deliberations. Even sometimes, I'm sure it's gotten a little testy with one another. But the work product that y'all have produced, you should be proud of. COA, that's a shining thing, where part of our community focuses now education, but it also allows our children who live here to go to a college for free. It wouldn't happen without y'all, without your leadership, the town commons or the project. I was pulling nails out of boards in the old hardware store, the old Fearing building. I was watching people come down the streets from that parking lot that's not completed yet, or that commons. That would not have happened if y'all had not come together as a board. Your vision, your work is appreciated, and I'm not the only one in the community that feels this way. I reckon I've got the biggest mouths in other big parts that have come up here and say that to you. But again, y'all are at a position in the time of Manio that we're seeing change. It's going to create a lot of work on you. There's going to be development changes that are coming that we haven't experienced in our town. And it's going to require y'all to have thoughtful considerations on those development pressures now that are coming to town. Development's good, but it needs to be smart. So I would, again, thank y'all for allowing us to participate in the town government. I hope you call on us more as a group so we can help where we can. And again, thank you for your leadership over the past years to allow the progress we're seeing in the town.
I'm Yvonne Farmer, and my husband is Mike Farmer. Again, uh...
Ms. Farmer?
Yes, sir.
If you'd be more comfortable, take your mask off, you're welcome to do it, because you're up there distance from everybody.
Thank you. Is that better?
It's up to you.
Thank you. I just want to introduce myself, and I do want to echo what Malcolm Fearing said. We do appreciate your service and all that you've done for the community. My husband and I had a home on Sir Walter Raleigh Street for 12 years. We love Manio. We're going to be future homeowners in the peninsula. Renaissance is building a home for us there. We're very excited about that. I do hope that the board will uphold the existing zoning that's in place for the parcel that is near the peninsula. I do understand a need for affordable housing. I work for Virginia Housing Development Authority, and we are the, one of the top housing finance authorities in the nation. We administer the tax credit program for the state. So I'm very familiar with how to produce affordable housing, and the best practice is to have mixed income communities living together, where you have perhaps 180% of the population and 100% of the area median income, and perhaps 20% of the residents is 60% of the area median income. I do want to just introduce myself again and let you know that as the community moves forward on affordable housing, I'd be glad to assist in any way that I can. And I do appreciate your time and giving me this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. The former, y'all get down here as fast as you can.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else, James?
All right. Mr. Mayor, seeing nobody else in the audience, I'm going to turn to the screen up there. And so we're going to ask if anybody's online, either by audio or video, if you could raise your hand, and I do see a hand raised, and the name on the screen says Mike McCarthy. So if you're on, if you're on Zoom, our IT director will unmute you, and, or if you're on a phone, hit star nine to unmute yourself. But Mr. McCarthy, if you'd like to speak, you're, you're, you're now unmuted.
I apologize, that was an inadvertent click of the mouse.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, and thank you for being here. We have a few other folks who are listed, listed up here as attendees. If any of the other attendees would like to raise, raise their hand, if you're on a phone, star nine on your phone. And we do have a hand raised, and that's coming from Tim Teepel, our IT director. We'll go ahead and he'll be unmuting you here. And you're now unmuted.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. I was actually privileged enough to be part of the 20-year plan, and I appreciate you guys for allowing us to overlook and make decisions. And one thing that I did mention on the 20-year plan, I was part of the waterfront and the Maritime Trail. Both of these both mentioned the Maritime Museum. When this plan was written, it was part of the trifecta, the Festival Park, the Maritime Museums, and also the Town of Manio, which of course failed. And now we are just the Town of Manio. Ever since then, the Maritime Museum has never looked, been brought up in any of the 20-year plans. All I ask is that you please consider it, since it is a taxpayer, something that taxpayers are paying for, and it is also somewhat underutilized. Yes, we do have a great sailing program for kids. However, what about adults? What about a chance to have a membership program with also maybe a rowing club? Also, since we lost Pirate Adventures, our youth that comes to Manio really have nothing to do. And it would be a great opportunity that we start looking at educational programs such as a program that was originally part of the Maritime Museum, which was like built a boat, built a boat in a day, which therefore it would bring more kids to Manio, since they're already here for the aquarium, Island Farm, and Fort Raleigh, which all has educational programs that our Maritime Museum does not. That's all I'm asking for, is in the 20-year plan, you might want to make that a bullet point and for something to look at. Thank you very much, and thank you for consideration of the 20-year plan.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking at the screen, and we still have several people on the, on the line. If you'd like to raise your hand, hit star nine on your phone if you'd like to speak. And one last time, please hit star nine on your phone if you'd like to raise your hand virtually and speak at the public comment. Mr. Mayor, I don't see any raised hands, sir.
All right. Well, anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close the public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven on the agenda, this is new business. Item number 7A, this is Resolution 2021-03. It's the appointment of a plant review officer for the Town of Manio. This is actually a, a big thing for us. It's, it's a new thing because we have, we have a town planner who has qualified in many dimensions under the zoning. For example, Certified Zoning Officer or CZO, Certified Flood Play Manager, CFM, an veritable alphabet soup of designations. But this one also required additional training with the Secretary of State, and our town planner is now qualified to be an official review officer here for the Town of Manio. From a process standpoint, it would, it's really a two-step process. For the general statutes, as a municipality, you of course would have to designate this person as a plant review officer or as a review officer, and then it would go from us over to Dare County, because Dare County, of course, has jurisdiction on this, so it would, the resolution would go to them with the recommendation to appoint her here at the Town of Manio. So I recommend, I would recommend approval of the resolution, and should you, should you do so, I'll take care of coordinating with Dare County and the county manager to get it in front of that Board of Commissioners over the county.
I move to approve Resolution 2021-03 for the appointment of a plant review officer.
I'll say you.
All right, there's been a motion and a traffic to appoint a new plant review officer. Take a poll, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro-Tam Selby, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, aye or nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, aye or nay?
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, aye or nay?
One, one question. I assume this would be under the planning department, would it not?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's in our role as, as town... It's in a role as town planner.
Motion carries. We'll move on.
Yes, sir. Item number 7B on the agenda. This is consideration to set a legislative public hearing for zoning text amendment, Article 9B3, Entrance District. In this particular case, the action of the board is not to hear the question on the zoning text amendment that was offered up by this developer. All the board would be doing tonight is to set the public hearing, because that will allow a notice period, so we can get the word out to public. There are public notices, written, et cetera. So we'll make sure there's a lot of daylight to this. But it is in accordance with the statute that you would actually need to set that proposed hearing. And we do recommend that it go ahead and be set presumably at the first meeting in May.
All right. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Richie, is it second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right. There's a motion, there's a second consideration of zoning text for the entrance district. Take a poll, Jane.
Yes, sir. We'll start with Mayor Protem Selby, iron A. Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
All right. The eyes have it. Motion carries.
Yes, sir. Item number 7C on the agenda. This is similar in that the action tonight is simply to set the public hearing and allow us to put the word out in the public for notice purposes and to get that daylight to it. This one is consideration to set a quasi-judicial public hearing for a conditional use permit at 713 and 715 North George Howe Street. Like the prior one, it's simply to set that hearing, and we recommend that it be set at that first meeting in May, on May 5th, so that we have plenty of time for the appropriate
Mr. Chair, I've got a question. Has this been presented to the Planning and zoning board yet?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The Planning and zoning board does have, they have actually recommendations on both of these, and that will be presented as part of the process when we have that hearing. It'll be the introductory process. And it's also noted in the, we do have, and this is for the public to know, we do have, we do have these staff reports. So if you go to manionc.gov under our agendas, the agenda package will actually include those recommendations as well as the supporting materials like the ordinances and things like that.
All right. We don't need a motion on this one, do we?
Yes, sir. If we could have a motion, second to vote.
Move to set an evidentiary hearing for a conditional use permit for 713, 715 North George Howe Street at 6:30 on May 5th.
Aye.
I'll second.
The motion is seconded, has consideration of George Howe Street. Take a poll, Jane.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, iron A.
All right. The eyes have it. Motion carries. We'll move on. Will both those hearings be made or settled?
Yes, as I'm looking at this, they are both proposed for, let's see, it's May 5th at 6:30 PM.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Next up on the agenda, this is item number eight. This is mayor and commissioners' comments.
All right. I have a couple of things I'd like to start out with. One of them, I'd like to ask you about Main Street USA. Where are we in a very condensed version? I don't think the public knows much about this Main Street USA, but if we can get approved for this thing, it's going to open Manio right wide open.
Yes, sir. And thank you, Ms. Mayor, for the opportunity. So I will keep it short. This is also another example of the members of the public and the community who have really been participating in a program that will lead us to Main Street America designation. So it starts, so in our case, as a small town, we go through the North Carolina Department of Commerce's Downtown Associate Community, or DAC program. Now, we had our second big, we had our second big meeting with the state as there's a process you have to go through with the state as you work through identifying community assets and working with businesses, nonprofits, and members of the community to go ahead and figure out what your strategic planning is, what you want to do. And the great thing about Commerce is, once we get through this DAC program, it's a three-year program, we can accelerate it, and we already have accelerated some pieces of it. We could get a Main Street America designation, which gives us access to more grant funds and more things that will help our businesses, our attractions, and bring people here, ranging from grants and other kinds of technical assistance. So I'm just so pleased. We had, we've been having really good turnout, even though it's not ideal to have this environment where we had to do a Zoom conference. The state folks weren't allowed to travel in the last couple sessions because of restrictions by the state. We're hopeful at the next meeting that we'll actually have one of the representatives from state here. And I will tell you, the state, when we walked them through during our application process, we actually walked around town with the division director and with one of our associates. They were just thrilled with what Manio is already doing, so they believe we can achieve this Main Street designation in three years or less.
Well, as Malcolm alluded to, Ms. Farmer, that we're on the move, and we're doing things by smart growth. That's the word I'm going to use, smart growth, not running with the ground. All right. I've got one other thing I'd like to bring up, and I might have asked Ben to get in this later on. I want to know about, we have Pirate's Cove and also CBS property down there in the town government, I mean, in our jurisdiction. I wonder, do we have or should we have been, maybe you're going to have to research it, concurrent jurisdiction on the causeway? Since, who owns the property? I know the highway owns the highway, but do we fit in anywhere? Where I'm going with this, I think Manio will take over responsibility of cleaning up causeway from Pirate's Cove to CBS. It should not be volunteers, because it's our entrance to Manio. It would be very nominal. It wouldn't be expensive, but somebody, we could hire somebody part-time, maybe one day a week to go out there and pick up on one side of the road, come back the other side of the road, pick up all the trash, which would really be, I think, a plus for Manio to take it over. Now, I know the state's supposed to do it, but they're doing such a, and they don't have any money. It's not the state's fault. They're doing such a sorry job of the shoulders now. It's unbelievable. And like I say, they just don't have the money. And I think we should consider taking the responsibility on and cleaning those shoulders up. Just a thought. And I'm probably going to take you, Ben, to look and see if we have any business there doing it.
Yeah. I don't think you'll need to do any sort of jurisdictional. I mean, I think you could probably reach some sort of agreement with DOT. You could certainly try and expand your jurisdiction as well, but I think you could do that without a jurisdictional issue. It could probably be through an interlocal agreement of some sort with DOT to take it over.
I can bring up some suggestions, and I will hold it off. If somebody wants to bring it up later on, we'll talk about it at another meeting. I just wanted to put the thought out there. Okay, that's made.
Speaking of the group that cleaned it up, I want to thank them publicly for cleaning that. I saw them early in the morning, and I certainly appreciate that as a commissioner. Early, I said something about the working group. I appreciate what the working group is doing, the time, energy. But I said the planning board, I meant the working group, to consider more than just P.I.A. on the West Side. I get a little passionate about public dollars, making sure they're spent equally and fairly. But I do appreciate your work. That's all I have.
Okay. Chris, Jane?
I just wanted to let everybody know there's going to be a cemetery board meeting next Wednesday, the 14th, at 9:00 AM. If anybody is interested in attending, I've got a couple of things to discuss.
I just want to say to you, the cemetery looks the best it's ever looked. I think you'll agree with me.
Yep.
Somebody, Frankie and his crew, and this time, they did an excellent job.
They weren't hard out there yet. And that's all I got.
Okay.
Just like I said, Johnny, you didn't fall in death here during your comment. I need to do more research on what you're talking about so I can be more educated about the subject, and I'll be concerned with the town attorney, the town planners, do a little more research myself about that. And I think it probably, it wouldn't help hurt to have some clarification on what you're talking about, maybe a little bit better defined. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Jane?
Yeah, I mean, just more of what I said. Thank you. And, you know, going off of what Malcolm had said, I think that that's a powerful statement. There's a lot going on, and I hope that we can stay in front of everything that's going to go on, whether you love it or hate it, it's happening. And so I think it's important to stay involved and make sure we're in front of that smart growth. And also, I hope we can do our best to involve the community throughout that, because it's such a huge asset we've got. Like I said, there's so much work within here, and it's all very impactful stuff. That's all I got. Appreciate it. And actually, that's not all I got. I think James might have something for us in the budget on getting some resource on helping out with the causeway as well, even though it's not necessarily our responsibility. If we can continue to push on, the folks that should be doing it, should they get some money available. But in the meantime, I agree. I think it doesn't matter whose responsibility it is. We should try to keep our front doors clean.
Yeah, sir. Darrell?
This is a question for Melissa. When was our, last time our land use plan was updated? Is Melissa still there?
She's coming.
I am. I'm stepping up to the town attorney's microphone. The last land use plan was updated in 2007, and I'd like to make a clarifying remark to you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Selby, and commissioners. That document is not approved by me. It's approved by, or the planning board. It is approved by you all. So I don't have any authority to change that document, but I want to make that clarifying comment. Thank you.
2007.
About five years ago, I had wanted the board to update our land use plan, but I think there was too much money. So, Mr. Mayor, can we put on our agenda for next time to discuss updating our land
What happened, Jane?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I thought it wasn't directed me. I'm sorry about that. Yes, actually, there are several of these items that were just mentioned, including the land use plan, some of the work on, in terms of historical things on the West Side, as well as the cleanup items that are all being included in the agenda, all being included in the proposed budget. So each of those items are already being included in the proposed budget, which we'll present to you at that first meeting in May.
All right. Can I ask you, Darrell?
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Richie?
Well, I did. All my friends have been in.
I didn't say you to laugh, Richie.
No, that's why I'm laughing. All my friends have been in. I'm good like that.
That's right. Okay. Well, it ain't come before the board. All right. We have a motion to adjourn. I don't know what day it is.
I move to recess meeting until April 23rd, 21:00, 5:00 PM.
All right. The motion recessed to April 21st. Second by A. Motion second to recess till whenever, April or something. Main adjourned. Oh, you want, oh, that's right. You have votes. I'm sorry. Roll call. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, iron A. Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
All right. Now we're set.